Well, good evening, everyone. Today is September 2nd, and we're here at the school committee meeting at the town hall. I do want to make a quick mention to open the meeting that we all have masks on in the meeting, and although we are clearly observing six-foot spacing and we spaced ourselves out appropriately, we will have the masks on. Our guests in the audience also have masks, too. Some of us may pull our masks down for better clarity of speech, which does help us in our microphones and for you to listen to us in the public. So, thank you very much. First of all is our community inbox submissions. As I did at the last meeting, I wanted to recognize those people who sent in community inbox submissions between the previous meeting and the last meeting we had on August 5th. From that time of the August 5th meeting to today on September 2nd, we had 23 total submissions from 21 different families. One of the submissions included 16 family names included in that letter to this school committee. Our school committee, the school committee has received every one of the community inbox submissions in groups as they came in, and so every school committee member has been able to see those submissions and read those at their leisure in advance of this meeting. So I'd like to read those names and the dates they came in. Leslie Barbado from 31 Oak Street on the 5th of August. Christopher Gallagher, 2246 Mechanic, also on the 5th of August. Sheldon Myers, 12 Water Street, the 5th of August. Christina Lacy, 2 Independence Drive, the 5th of August. Catherine Rocha, 2 Carlton Lane, the 5th of August. Jennifer Pollinger, 30 Forest Road, also the 5th of August. Allison Gibbons sent two replies to the inbox from 11 Fairway Lane on August 5th. Dawn Kellaway, 41 Cedar Street, on August 5th. Lori Angorn, 10 Lion Lane, August 5th. Rebecca Murphy, 119 South Street, August 5th. Deborah Clority, 16 Childs Lane, August 5th. Colleen McManus, 39 Fairway Lane, August 5th. The next submission we received was from Shelby Cornbluth, 20 Lawton Lane, on the 13th of August. Dawn Steedle-Harrelson sent us two responses to the inbox from 158 Central Street on the 13th of August. Next was Sienna and Robert Dorich from 6 Morris Street on the 14th of August. Susan Shea sent a thank you to the community inbox on the 17th of August. Elizabeth Hennaberry, 17 North Street, on the 18th of August. Lori Angorn, 10 Lion Lane, on the 16th of August. Sienna and Robert Dorich and 16 other names included in that community letter was sent to us on the 17th of August. Mark Woodard, 13 New Ponset Heights, on the 21st of August. And finally, Kenneth Hennaberry, 17 North Street, on the 18th of August. Thank you for those submissions. Thank you for bringing to our attention as a school committee your concerns and thoughts as community members. Next on the agenda is approval of minutes. I think we have a few of them in the box there. Any discussion? The first one is for July 27th minutes. Any points? Or any clarification from anyone?
No.
Would someone like to motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of July 27th, 2020, our special meeting.
Thank you, Tina. Second?
Second.
Second by Brent. Any further discussion? All in favor? Five-zero, 27th minutes from the 27th. Thank you. The next minutes are August 5th minutes. Any corrections or additions, or would someone like to move?
I move we accept the August 5th and 30th minutes as presented.
Brett moved?
I'll second, Brent.
Second by Tina. Any further discussion on the August 5th minutes? Seeing none, all in favor? Five-zero. Thank you all. I think next we have on our agenda, update on the summer work in preparation for the opening of school. Dr. Bernos, Mr. Yuckna. We also have Tony Masali here with us as well tonight.
Good evening, everyone. So this update for school is quite different than what we've had in years past, as we know that we're going to have a school year that is quite different than anything that we've ever seen before. And there's been much effort that has gone into planning for this school year, and you'll hear about those things in just a few minutes, too. Our staff began back on August 25th. That was our official opening day. Typically, we have that day with everyone at the high school auditorium where we meet together for our commencement speeches, which is by our union president, Dan Grady, myself, and then the chair of the school committee, Richard Pearson. We still had our opening day exercises, but they were spread across all five buildings with everyone socially distanced and attending virtually. So that went off well, and then principals had their opening days within their schools as well, and we've been using a lot of technology to be able to do that virtually. So it was definitely different. And again, we know this year's going to be different than anything that we've ever experienced or ever had to even plan for. It is quite something to plan for as we'll be entering into a hybrid model that schools have not done before. And there's a lot that goes behind the scenes, and the more questions that you ask and dive in, the more work there is to do. So we also know that it's really important that we understand that it's going to be starting with uncertainty from our staff and from our students, and that there's no clear answer to what really lies before us. But what we do know is that we're here to meet the needs of our students, and that they haven't been in school since March 13th, and we're really looking forward to seeing them come back. Teachers are really excited. Their rooms, it looks like a school. It looks different when you look in a classroom, and you only see, you know, half the number of desks that are in a classroom, and a lot of the other furniture that's moved out to allow for all of the social distancing that needs to take place. But we know that these precautions, along with mask wearing, washing hands, all of the sanitizing stations that we have in every single classroom, that this is what's going to make for a safe reopening of school, and that with this multi-layered approach, that we can bring students and staff back safely. So we will have new rules and protocols to follow. We also know that it's going to be a new normal, if you will, and that there could be bumps along the way, and we're going in with eyes wide open, and we will learn and we will make adjustments as we need to. This is definitely a journey that does not come with a roadmap. It is one that there's no playbook or script or score or any of that for this. But what we do know is that we're working together as a team, and we have a very strong community of support. And because of that team, and because of the strong community, and because of our fabulous students, we will continue to be able to meet the needs of our students as we move forward. This year, our enrollment is 2,482. We're down 113 students from last year. We've seen a number of students that have been withdrawing for different reasons, and then a number of students that have been enrolling as well. So aside from what we would typically see as an example with students that from eighth grade moved to private schools, which we see on an annual basis, that just happens, we've seen 73 students withdraw from the district, but we've had 39 new enrollments as well. We welcomed as far as new staff members this year. They started actually July 1. Mrs. Kate Campbell is the principal of the IGO. Corey Michaelazek as the director of student services. Karen McKinnon as the K-8 ELA Social Studies and Title I Director. And then Ms. Jen Rosenberg, as you know, as our nurse at the Ahern, but as in the nurse leader position. We also have seven new teachers that are joining us this year, and approximately five new educational assistants to start the year. So as we know, our opening is a hybrid model plan, which is, as we said, something we've never imagined and never planned for, and that takes a lot of planning, and it's going to take a lot of patience and support, too, as we go on this new venture. At the elementary level, we know the model is different from the secondary level. And again, planning for these types of models is something that is the most challenging. And that is the reason that we have these 10 days before the school year starts, where the commissioner has reduced the number of school days for students, so that we can begin all of the training and the professional development that we've typically had, but it looks much different this year. So as I said, we started on the 25th, and we've had three days last week. We are in our fifth day as of today with teachers, and that has included safety training. It's training on protocols for social distancing, for movement around the schools, what that looks like, cleaning protocols and understanding what will be taking place and when by our custodial staff, protocols for do's and don'ts in the classroom. And all of these protocols include expectations, that are expectations for not only our staff, but for our students, for our parents, for our administration, our custodial staff. And this will all be sent out, all of these separate protocols, to parents as well. It will be updated within the plan on the website, but where it's easily accessible through principals when they send out their communication at the beginning of the school year. And they encompass things such as mask wearing, mask and snack breaks when we think about some of our younger students, bus transportation, arrival, dismissal, visitors into the buildings, health services, scenarios of what takes place, office and attendance, hallways and common areas, what are the expectations as far as supervision and what that looks like, learning supports, lunch for those at our secondary level, where we will be having lunch in the cafeteria, and then also multiple actual, multiple areas at the high school and adding a different lunch as well. In the classroom, expectations, and when it gets to remote learning, and then devices, when we have devices as well. So all of those school operations and procedures are trainings that we've been already taking place and continuing with, and our students will also have different trainings when they come in, so they can learn about the social distancing and all of the markers and the hallways and how they've been divided with tape and arrows, and then all of the circles that are around the school and the signage, et cetera. One of the questions that has been asked before is with us, starting in this hybrid model, at what point do we make a decision and change from a hybrid model to where it would be all in person, or to go fully remote? And that information is really going to come in the form of data from multiple sources for us. So we don't have an exact date at this point. We do know that the Department of Education is saying for us to, you know, one of the data points is really the Department of Public Health and our numbers. We look at our context of Foxborough. We look at the zones of where we are. We know that we currently are in a yellow zone based on the number of cases that we have in Foxborough. We look at what's taking place across the state. And it's not something where we can flip-flop very quickly, too. It's a matter of looking for trends and looking over a period of three to four weeks and what that data looks like. So we don't have a crystal ball at this point. There's so much uncertainty in so many different areas, but we'll be watching that data and consulting with our local board of health, with the state board of health, and all of the data that's centered around that. Couple of other things that I wanted to mention when we think about enrollment and what's taking place. I know that one of the questions we have our students that have opted to go fully remote, Cohort D, as we've been referring to the different cohorts, and at this point in time, we had, based on our initial survey, had anticipated that 10% of our families would go fully remote. It actually has ended up, we have 6% of our families that have chosen to go fully remote. A number of them are students from the same family in the district, and they've chosen that based on, you know, a variety of needs. So across the district, when we look at how that plays out, that 6% of our enrollment at the elementary level, when we look across the grade levels, or actually across all grade levels, it ranges anywhere from two students in a grade level to the highest at 23 students in a grade level. So we see across the schools, for instance, at the high school, we have 30 students. At the middle school, we have 35. At the Taylor, 14. At the IGO, 47. And at the Burrow, 24. One of the things that we've been working really hard on during these days is at the elementary level, we know that Cohort D will be able to join the specials when we think about music and art and wellness at the elementary level. We have been working on schedules to be able to do this at the middle school level as well this week, and we're going to be able to do that with Cohort D, to be able to have them engage in asynchronous with our art, our music, our wellness, and our tech ed. So that'll be a synchronous session one day a week with each of those areas, and then two days, which would be asynchronous, but that would provide them to be synchronous with our teachers. Now, the difference there is, it's with the remote students together, and based on scheduling and being able to make that work, it's having fifth and sixth graders together and seventh and eighth graders together, based on our numbers. So when we think about the curriculum, it's not going to mirror exactly what's happening in the fifth grade and the sixth grade, because they're not in person. They are remote. But we're going to be able to have them join in those four areas at the middle school. So that's been a really a big feat in scheduling and try to make that work, and we're really excited that we're going to be able to do that at the middle school level. As far as at the elementary level, tomorrow night, we're going to be having a virtual town hall. There were a number of questions that were coming up across the three elementary schools, and we pride ourselves on consistency across the three schools. So we decided to do what we had done, you know, earlier back in August in having a virtual town hall, and that will be tomorrow evening. So links have gone out to parents there, and the agenda really is going to be just kind of a welcome and some updates, and to talk about what arrival and dismissal will look like, talk about all of the health and safety protocols that will be in place. Again, those will be sent out to parents, too, with all of the information at the beginning of the year, but to be able to share that virtually, to talk about what a student's day will look like, kindergarten screening, that's mandated by law, and being able to have our kindergarten screening take place. We have those days coming up on September 8th and 10th. And then, at the same time, we're going to be having some, they're optional, but elementary visits with our cohorts, being able to come into school. They're going to be able to attend if they're in the morning session on September 8th, and they'll be able to experience the hybrid schedule, and that's going to include transportation for the students to ride the bus to school, and that's going to run from 8:45 to 11:15. Again, it is optional, but we hope our families do participate. And then Cohort B for our elementary students will be on September 10th. And all of this information has gone out from principals to families. At the secondary level, we will see fifth grade students coming in, and they will be attending with having a modified orientation than what we've been able to have in the past, and that information has gone out from Ms. Fraser as far as what that orientation will look like. And at the high school, information has gone out as well. We're going to have a virtual town hall evening with secondary as well. That's going to be next Tuesday night. Families can expect to see that email go out tomorrow with the link. And again, I would just like to publicly thank Mike Weber, Foxborough Cable Access, for helping us so much with these virtual town halls and providing that facilitation, because it allows us to have the number of people join us. So that will be next Tuesday night. As far as facilities, I was going to turn that over to Mr. Masali as far as what's been happening over the summer.
All right. Good evening, everybody. So we're starting off with our regular summer projects. What we usually do is all the floors throughout all the district and the schools been stripped and waxed. All the carpets have been cleaned and shampooed. All the ventilation grills, all the exhaust grills been removed, cleaned, and if they looked rusty, we painted them all, when, you know, necessary, and reinstalled them. All classrooms furniture, cafeteria furniture, music, all that, all has been washed down and disinfected. We also, all the HVAC units, rooftops, HAUs, and all the unit vents, we really spent some time on them this year, because we had some extra time, obviously, and we really gave them a good cleaning, and we actually did two filter changes so far since from March. So we're doing good there. And all exhaust units up on the roofs, all been cleaned, greased, all the belts have been changed. We do the usual thing. At the gyms, we're refinished, you know, the high school gym and the Ahern gyms, we're all, you know, refinished. We got to get a lot of painting done this year, which was really, really good. We, over at the IGO, we did all the hallways. We did the whole gym. We did like six classrooms and a few offices. Over at the Taylor, we did four classrooms, touched up doors and door jams. At Ahern School, we really got about 70% of the classrooms were painted this year, and touched up some hallways and other areas. High school, we end up painting six classrooms and a few common areas. And so that's pretty much general of what we did throughout all the districts. And then I have a couple of projects that we've done through just certain buildings. So the IGO school, we replaced 18,000 square feet of rubber roofing and insulation. We had some, we had wind damage up there back right before, probably around, I believe it was April. We got a good windstorm, and the rubber started peeling. So Charon's company came through, and they took care of everything for us. So that was a big, that's a big, that was a plus. And we also did the IGO gym completely over. We sanded it down completely, down to the bare wood, and it had all new lines put in, and it really looks like a brand-new now. And we had a couple, we had a condenser up on the roof in one of the classrooms in 504. We replaced that, too. Over at the Taylor School, we built two isolation rooms and a nurse's office with separate exhaust and lighting, just so they'll have an area if needed. And also, we upgraded the nurse's office exhaust system, you know, it was built back in the 60s. So we end up beefing up the CFMs, which really makes a big difference. And we actually went around, and I had custom screens built, because that building, for some reason, never had screens on the windows. So I had some screens made up, and we end up, so every window has a screen there, so now they can open the windows and not worry about any bugs coming in. At the Ahern School, we configure it, we end up taking the science rooms, two science rooms, and for new academic purpose, we removed the built-in islands in the middle that were taking up a lot of room. It really, it just wasn't set up right. And we did that, and we relocated all the plumbing and the electrical and got rid of the gas in that area there. It really come out really, really good. We've also replaced two, we've been replacing old water fountains with the new ones with the bottle fill, so it's much more, works a lot better for, and it's more, I've seen it. And also, the high school, we worked on room 122. We replaced all the ceiling grid, and we added some LED lighting in that room. That's the one up by the library there, that room right across from there. And what else? We also did PVC flooring nosing, so we cleaned that room up pretty good. The, we also had a BDA radio antenna system installed at the high school. That's for the two-way radios for the police and fire, and also for the buses and all that. So that was a, because that, for some reason, that building was very tough to get, communicate with all the block walls, but got that in there. And that was a joint, a joint thing with IT and facilities together, because it was really both that did that. And the concession stand at the San Burns Field, all the plumbing, electrical, fire alarms, all been, all been done. So bathrooms are just above function. There's a few things that still have to be done, just to get the OC permit, but we're, you know, we're there just about, so. And, you know, all the interior, the doors have been painted and everything. So we're pretty much there, just minor stuff, you know, mirrors and, you know, hand so, and stuff like that, but that's basically it on that end. And then, on the COVID-19, we've done, we've installed quite a bit of plexiglass in petitions throughout all the buildings where they're needed, especially in the offices and guidance and the nurses' areas where there's a lot of contact with students and that. We also installed proper signage, floor decals. If you go through the building, you're going to start seeing, you know, step six feet apart. So we've done that throughout all the buildings. We purchased and distributed a lot of PPE out there, and it just keeps on. It's like an ongoing thing. We also, we hired Collier. It's a consulting company for our HVAC system, so we had them come in and go through each piece of equipment throughout all the facilities to let us know that if it's working, you know, what are your recommendations that we need to do and all that, and very happy, and they give us some good recommendations also. So that was, that was really, it was good, you know, to ensure the system's all running properly and just keep it going. And basically, we moved a lot of furniture from classrooms and other areas, and I'm starting to get containers, and some of the stuff we put away in buildings, but fortunately, you can't fit it all in the building, so I got some containers. We started, stopped putting stuff in the containers, because we know the school's going to be happening real soon. And basically, we trained our staff. We had them, they had a training for COVID proper way of cleaning. We did it to the, like a Zoom type of meeting, and that was really, very helpful for the guys. It kind of showed them the proper way of doing the COVID compared to regular cleaning. We've also purchased, you know, the electrostatic guns. We got quite a few of them, you know, and that's something we've been going, I mean, we've been, luckily, we've, we had a gun before all this stuff happened. And I tell you, I got my use out of that one, but as time went, we got more, and it was very hard to get any of that stuff for a while. But we had one from H1N1 way back in the day, but that's a great, great tool. I have to say, the guys did, we did very well. I mean, we got the phase two started early over at the Burrow. So a lot of the guys kind of pitched in and got everything, you know, I think within two weeks, we had everything ready for the contractor to take over on that. And the same thing at the last two weeks in August, when we got the building over. A lot of my guys stepped up, and we, they went over there and helped with everything, you know, in the new, you know, temporary classrooms and moving everything around. And I got to say, can't do it all. I got to, you know, give a lot of credit to the custodial staff and also the maintenance staff. They've, you know, they've all worked in extra hours and just kind of keep everybody, keep everything going, and trying to do our best to keep everybody safe and have beginning of the new school yet.
Well, I think first of all, I just want to say thank you for all that you and your crew has done already. Just the COVID work, of course, to attest to what we have to deal with now, but all the basic maintenance that is important for our buildings, from waxing floors to redoing gym floors to putting shades on. Those are some basic things that can bring. So thank you so much for that. And certainly, from me, but I'm sure the committee as well, thank you going forward. If I don't get to talk to you every day for the next month, which you don't necessarily need to, by the way, but if I don't get to, please thank you and your staff for all they're going to do ahead. It's clear by, to me and to all of us in this hybrid model that we're doing, that their daily effort is probably going to be amped up in a very, very different world for them. And so I know for a fact our parents and this community appreciates, appreciates all that effort. And thanks also working for Collier and bringing in advisors, and Mr. Yuckna told us about this, but I think, what a great, what a great decision for us to bring in some other experts to help add to what we do. I do know the maintenance staff there knows a lot about our vents and everything that we got there, but why not bring a second source in? So I appreciate that we're not afraid to bring others in. So, other comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to piggyback on the Collier study and the independent study. I know Mr. Yuckna said the report's not going to be ready until the 14th of September, but you said that they've given us recommendations sort of as we go, and so as they give you a recommendation for something, are you guys jumping right on it?
Right. Yeah. So like the unit vents, they want them 100% open. So we bring in 100% outside air. We're usually, it's usually 20% air by code, by the state. So we've, you know, we've opened them up. Some buildings are a little, it's going to, you know, it's going to, right now, it's not so bad, but once we get into the winter season, and, you know, we might have to cut back just a little so we can keep the people warm, too. We don't want to freeze anything up. But right now, we're at 100% on all the rooftop units, wide open, bringing in as much fresh air as possible. We also have a lot, you know, windows being open, so, you know, trying to follow the CDC guidelines to, you know, to make, to make everybody safe.
And as they have been going about their independent study, there haven't been any major issues that we've needed to address at this point?
So they're done with their study. They spent the full week doing it, going through each building, and they're working on the report now. I spoke to the partner in charge, and I actually expect to have the study by potentially next Tuesday, which will be a little earlier than they originally promised. I think Tony can attest to this, but the, basically, in going through the buildings, and they had a number of different guys doing it, so it wasn't just one individual, which was nice, because, yeah, having different eyes looking at different things. But I met with two of them on two of the different sites, and I know Tony met pretty much with all of them. If it wasn't him, it was Carl or Jeff. But they, they actually gave us extremely high marks for the condition of our equipment, even considering the age of some of the buildings. some of the buildings. You know, they were kind of impressed with the fact that every piece of equipment did operate, we did find a few vent, you know, exhaust vents and stuff like that, that even though we had been going around, we found a couple more under their thing, so again, that weren't working properly, so those have been replaced. But in general, I think they, they felt that the airflow was appropriate. One of the big things was on the filters, they did test and say that we can use the MIR-13 filters on the rooftop units, so we have ordered those. The reality is, everybody's ordered those, so, you know, as soon as we get them, we will install them, we're not going to wait for the next filter change. But the, at least the verbal recommendation they gave to us was that the MIR-8s for the UNI vents was the level you should use to keep that equipment running properly. Again, the biggest issue you're trying to have is airflow, bringing in fresh air from the outside, and if you restrict it, then you're not accomplishing that either. So, but there was really no, at least in my conversations, and I haven't seen, obviously, the final report, there was no real negatives to the report at all. Again, I think we got high marks, and I have to give credit to the maintenance and facilities for doing a really good job. The biggest issue, I think we started addressing before they came in, actually, I think we had it pretty much all addressed before they got here, was realizing that the return vents in all of our systems are really the biggest issue as far as any type of contaminant coming back, because it's being sucked out of the rooms. And as Tony just noted, was we took every single one of those off and cleaned out the ductwork, cleaned out the vents, cleaned out everything, to make sure that there was nothing there that was either restricting airflow, which is a big problem, or potentially being a contaminant that would go into filters. So I think in doing that, we, it's a job that, you know, you always want to try to get done to the level we've done this time, but I think we've done a really good job on it. So, again, I expect a report sometime next week, but other than the few minor things that they, they brought up to us, which we've already addressed, I don't know that we're going to see much of any other concerns on their side.
Oh, that's great. I mean, thank you, I'm sorry to harp on this, I have had a few people ask me about it, and I think we've seen that proper ventilation is definitely a key to keeping everybody safe in our buildings, and so this is really good information to have, and I appreciate everything you and your, your guys have done to make sure our systems are up to snuff. And the Collier's people I know are good thorough people too, so glad they were on the job as well.
They went to every single unit and literally went through it and checked everything.
Well, I think that's important, I'm glad, you know, I'm sure our families will be glad to hear this.
I also think that it is the advantage of having a facilities department in a town, because as one of the engineers was saying to me, the difference is, you can tell when somebody has actually gone into the equipment and done its normal maintenance on it, and he said, in a lot of the districts that they're being called into, they're going into things where things aren't running at all, and it hasn't been for a while, but again, people haven't taken the effort and time and the expense of maintaining it. Yeah, so I think, I think that's the difference with Foxborough, is that they understand that if we maintain our buildings, that they'll last longer, and they have given us the resources to do that, and I do give, like I said, a lot of credit to the entire maintenance department and facilities in general for really doing the job that needs to be done, but we, we do this on a regular basis, so this is not COVID-19, this is the way we operate, so.
Well, and that goes for our current maintenance department, and going back to Mike O'Leary and years past, we've always maintained our buildings over the years, so appreciate all that, so.
Brent?
Just a point of information on the HVAC, what kind of exchange rates are we supposed to be targeting?
The, every piece of equipment is different. So depending on the size of the room, but in, in general, part of the report will actually highlight what they've done, because they did testing on that, but, and I don't have the numbers on it, but what they were saying was, we were meeting or exceeding in most cases what the exchange rate should be, so we felt good about that, that was, that was kind of a major issue, because you can't, you know, really, if the equipment's running to its specification, then it's meeting the exchange rate, and our equipment was running to the specification, so. You could look at a brand-new building, which would have a totally different thing than a twenty-year-old building, you can't expect it to do the same.
Right, the specs will be different for a newer building than it would be a building built in the seventies, eighties.
I actually have a couple more questions.
About the vents?
About the HVAC, but about facilities.
So, but I was just going to say, thanks again for all this time, I don't know if the public understands, the conversation about the venting and what happens in school buildings is a massive undertaking for the size of buildings, right? I mean, I've been in four school districts, and this discussion about venting and the machines working and the differences in interior classrooms, exterior classrooms, it's, it's a magnitude of a discussion. It's huge, so. I think we've talked about this before, you're talking about us maintaining five-hundred-and-sixty-thousand square feet of space. Exactly. And, you know, so that's kind of a critical component to this, and if you do let it get away on you, it's almost impossible to catch up. Well, well said, and I think that should be a great takeaway, so I know you've said it, but I think it's fair to point out that at the volume and the size that we're dealing with in this school system and the multitude of ages in our school buildings, clearly, for us to be on top of the game was real good work, even, thank you, thank you, like another year ago, so, well said, and thanks for taking the time on this, this is, this is important, not just for COVID. I think Tina had another question.
I just have two more questions. One was going back to the concession stand, and I wanted to, first, thank you, because I know you've been working, you and your team have been working really hard to finish up the concession stand, and I have to ask how, when the engraved bricks might be installed, because you know that is a bit near and dear to my heart, I sold a lot of people, a lot of bricks a couple years ago, and I know people want to see them at some point, it's not high on our priority list, I understand that, believe me, I understand that, and as it should be, but I just want to make sure it's still, still in progress.
Yes, it is.
My other question was about the Borough, I know the last time we were here in August, there was a lot of work to be done, if we were to drive up to the Borough right now, how are things looking for the first day of school?
So, it's the typical fire drill at the, you know, the last minute with most contractors, but in general, the site looks very good compared to what it did. They have hydro-seated the and regraded all of the front part of the building and cleaned that up. They are putting in the last set of foundations, which is where the new front entrance way will be, they were pouring the footings today. So we do have a gaping hole in den center of the building.
But we won't in two weeks.
Well, we'll have a hole, just as we start to be filled. But the, but the auditorium and all of that has been, new flooring has been poured into all that area, so that will be moving forward. As far as the, the building itself, once you get into the building, and I, and again, I can only say I, how impressed I am with the custodial staff, because if you saw it two weeks ago and then you saw it today, you would have said there was no way we'd get to where we are. As you know, we had to collapse almost fifty percent of the building into other classrooms that were existing, furniture, you know, whiteboards, equipment, tech, you know, tech and stuff like that, which meant we, we kind of garbaged up every room in the building to give them those rooms to work on, and then we had to build the new nine rooms, the three temporary in the gym and the three new preschool rooms. So literally up until about two weeks ago, it was, it was a zoo, and it really has calmed down, I think, you know, Pip, who is the head custodian there, has done a phenomenal job working with the other guys to get them to all, you know, he knows the building well, and he knows what needs to be done, but he helped coordinate with Tony and Carl. But all of the temporary rooms, really, if you look at it, you'd never realize it's a temporary room, they're, they're larger than our old classrooms, which is nice. The only negative, or not negative, but the only difference is, they don't have a tiled floor, they have a finished concrete floor, but everything else, walls with, you know, pegboards and wallboards and whiteboards and, you know, everything else is in there, they, they really did come out nice, they are fully air-conditioned, as is the pre-K wing. So from a conditioning point of view, we have brand-new equipment running our HVACs in those areas, which is about fifty percent of the building, which is, which is kind of nice. And then the older classrooms, again, that we had to go through and clean and get the dust out from construction and stuff like that, and again, I personally feel that, I, you know, I was skeptical about a week ago, but very pleased that it came out to where it did right now. So I'm, I'm comfortable, I think the kids will be very comfortable, I know the teachers were very pleased at the end result, and we're still not finished, obviously, so.
Thanks, Bill, I appreciate the input.
Some of the teachers are going, this is my, this is temporary?
Yeah, they're going to want to stay.
Exactly, they're like, I guess, this is a gym.
Oh, thank you, Tony.
All right, well, thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you very much, thanks for your time tonight. So I'm also going to do the IT side, Aaron Heire actually had a family death, so he's not available today or tomorrow, but he did leave me a list of the activities that were taken by IT during the summer. New teacher computers in all core academic classrooms, the Ahern, Igo and the Borough, were upgraded. Two hundred-plus interactive whiteboards and projectors were upgraded, so we virtually had to go through every single whiteboard throughout the district and do the upgrades to give us, we had an issue with our stylus pens and stuff that would control them before, we came up with a solution and we replaced all throughout the entire district. We installed our integrated WebEx video and audio conferencing, which we've been talking about for quite some time, we obviously are using it on a regular basis now, and that will be the platform, because it's a secure platform, as compared to Zoom, people have to log into it with our credentials, so it's a controlled environment. All classrooms were reset and tested after the summer, as you know, we have to take all the, get everything out of a classroom to clean it, and then we have to put it all back, therefore, the IT doesn't always end up working the way it's supposed to, and so we have to go through, we touch every single piece that's in there. Workspace remote access implementation for teachers who, to access their files remotely, so a lot of stuff we have in our shared files typically weren't available to, for a teacher to grab from the outside, they, they put in this workspace remote access package that basically allowed that to happen. They obviously assisted us with taking apart the entire Borough project, classrooms, storing the equipment, now resetting it all as well. Upgraded state reporting and student data and scheduling support for various schedules that are going to be, are needed on a regular basis, assisted with multiple data, multiple data projects, export, student rostering and surveys, implemented cloud-based PowerSchool gradebook to improve access, implemented an accident management module to meet state reporting requirements for school safety and discipline. They updated the data requirements for attendance for the remote learning to meet new state reporting requirements. In-tuned mobile device management system was implemented to, for one-to-one computer deployment, which is coming soon. Inventory and barcoded every computer and every piece of hardware throughout the district, it's something we've been trying to do for years so that we have a good inventory system, and obviously that, this now gives us that, and then responded to all of the support requests throughout the district. Remembering that our IT department is also controlling the entire town, so they had all of the requests from the town as, on a regular basis as the process went, so. I'm sure that Aaron missed a number of things on his list, because quite honestly, they've been going twenty-four-seven, and again, a lot of, a lot of different software packages have been added to basically let it, make it so we can do remote, you know, whether it's with the students, the teachers, and, you know, as we move forward, so. And we're still waiting for upgrade, I mean, you know, information on when the actual laptops will land, yeah, at this point, we believe they've been in production already, but we're just waiting to see what the actual new schedule will be for our delivery.
Well, thank you for that comprehensive report, and I think a thank you goes to Aaron and his department for what has been done, and once again, going forward where we're going to go, because we're going to a new tech world a little bit too, aren't we? So, and all the new laptops come in, so huge thank you, public thank you to Aaron and the IT department for everything they've done on both sides. Tina, yeah, please.
Do we have a plan for distributing the laptops that we do have to families who need them to start remote learning on September fourteenth, assuming ours aren't in and ready? I'm just, you know, we're seeing how many shortages there are across the country, this is really, you know, kind of out of our hands at this point, but what is, what is the plan for distribution to families that need a laptop in order to start? And I know that's not every family in the district, but I know we had, you know, quite a few in the spring.
Well, we do, but it's, it's kind of sectioned off. First thing we're doing is, is trying to get the Cohort D, you know, computers out to those families, because again, they're outside of our district and outside of our control that way. As far as, we don't have that many other laptops available, but we've taken back the ones that we did put out and we refurbished those, so they will be done on a priority basis, based on need and family, and also based on where they are within an educational thing, as an example, we will probably give a higher priority to a child that's on a special needs, which has more remote requirements than somebody on a regular, at least initially, until we can kind of roll through it. We've also talked about, we are bringing obviously back a number of desktop units that we are going to be deploying again, and potentially putting those out to families as well, to give it as an option. And I think that's, so we're, we're kind of doing this in multi-staged environments, and we have actually started, you know, putting out the first of the laptops that we do have, which again, is a limited quantity, so that's the unfortunate part here, is the, the reason we ordered twenty-six hundred is, we virtually need one new one for every student that we have, so.
I would also add to that, that it's important that we keep some of our laptops in use in the school, so that we can actually build some capacity with our kids, with the technology and our teachers, so that if we were to go full remote, they would have been prepared. So it is that fine line of balancing what we have and what we are able to share, and that's why the desktop backup plan is sort of where we are.
It's good to know we have a backup plan, because, you know, we're in an unfortunate position at this point, waiting for our twenty-six hundred laptops to come in, even though we ordered them back in April.
Right, and I think that's a, I think that's a really important point, that we did order them back in April, and districts that have ordered later in May, in June, it's not just Foxborough that's waiting on these units, it's, that is the, one of the biggest topics of conversation at the state level of not having the devices in, in time and having that pushed out. So we did order them, we're hoping to get a new ship date at the end of this week, is what Aaron is, is hoping for, and at the same time, we also know that we ordered the number that we did, because that's the number that we needed, and so it is a little bit out of our, our hands, well, it is out our, out of our hands.
It's both frustrating and out of our hands.
Every, everything these days, right? You know, and I think that's, that's really important, that it's, we're going to have to exercise patience and understanding in that we are living in, we continue to say unprecedented times, but there's no other way to describe it, there really isn't.
I think it's important, though, that our families know that we're not just going to brush our hands of them and say, well, sorry, you don't have a computer, you better go get one, or, we're going to make this right for our kids one way or the other.
Yeah, and I, and I think, you know, it's, we went out on a limb when we actually placed the order, because the COVID money wasn't available at the time, and basically, we decided that we were going to order the equipment anyways, and if we had to, we were going to cut into our budgets to basically make it work. Fortunately, the COVID money came in shortly after we ordered, so we were covered on that, but, you know, it wasn't because, you know, of our lack of responsiveness or working on this, we were ahead of that curve, just unfortunately not, you know, had enough to beat what the United States embargo on the equipment was, so.
Exactly, yeah. Brent?
What does making it right for our families who need access to laptops or desktops look like? For a given family, what, what, what should they do?
We're going to do our best to get what we can to them, but as we just said.
Who do they contact?
We've sent this out, so they can contact Janet Gracia as far as, you know, in, in central office, and we've sent out a survey, Aaron did that a week, two ago, to contact families if they didn't have Wi-Fi, you know, or internet access in their own homes, and with some of the different opportunities through Comcast and what we can do to help families there, so we have that information and are reaching out to those families as well.
Thank you. Any further questions? Thank you for the IT update. Anything, is that it for us, pretty much, opening schools, all set? Everyone? Great, well, thank you. Next on agenda is our update on athletics. In the audience, we have Athletic Director Joe Cusack, and also High School Principal Diane Madsen-Packer stopped by as well too, so thank you.
Hello, hello, everybody, sorry. I met this committee for the first time eleven and a half months ago, and it has been quite a while, so I'm back. So I was asked to provide an update on the fall sports landscape, honestly, until, I would argue, last week, there was a lot of uncertainty, especially if you have kids who are familiar with youth sports, there were guidance put out during the summer. the summer. Multiple versions, decisions, revisions. The Mass EEA released safety standards for youth sports that specifically applied to K through 12 on August thirteenth. Those guidelines broke all the sports into different risk categories, lower, moderate, and higher, and also identified different types of play that can or can't occur, different types of practicing games, tournaments, and that, those types of things. Since then, on August nineteenth, the MIA Board of Directors voted on multiple proposals that were made by their task force, which worked all summer to come up with recommendations about what to do, you know, as the rules were changing all summer. Among those suggestions, there were some items, I'll just touch on some highlights, and then I'm happy to answer questions, it's probably the easiest way to do this. Among the, they officially changed the start date for the fall, which is now September eighteenth, it's a Friday. They also added a fourth season to the school year. They call it the floating season, or Fall Two. Essentially, they moved, they officially moved football and competitive cheerleading to this period. It's actually from February twenty-second approximately to April twenty-fourth, and then the spring slid back and may actually end very close to July. Then, following that, the MIA Sport Committee, so there's a committee for every single sport that deals with typically not a lot of changes, but this year, they had to go through and make modifications. Part of the EEA document said you can only play certain sports, certain types of activities in certain sports if you made modifications to the sport. So each sport has made dramatic changes to, to everything, from kids wearing masks to a different number of kids on the field, to, you know, just changing aspects of the games that, you know, there'll be athletics and there'll be activities, it's going to be, it's going to be a version of the sport that the kids have played before, to say the least. So this fall, Foxborough is, is offering field hockey, golf, boys and girls soccer, and boys and girls cross-country. The omission from that list is volleyball. So volleyball, the Hockmuck League decided to move to that Fall Two, or Floating Season, in February and April. It was actually driven for two things, building access, you know, do we really want so many kids from our, not only our town, but other towns, in our buildings after school hours? Well, we're doing everything we can to keep them empty and clear. And then a large number of the schools within our league actually don't have access to a gym right now. We're really lucky that we do. They've turned them into overflow classrooms, overflow cafeterias, storage, all kinds of stuff. So the reality is, you know, especially it's an indoor, indoor sport, won't be affected by the winter, so it should flow very well in the Fall Two season. One of the other things that the league did was to, let me back up, one of the other recommendations made by the MIA was to waive what they call Rule Forty, which is out-of-season coaching. They wanted to waive it for this year as an argument to get kids in contact with their coaches, and these kids have missed a lot in the last six months, and we all know that. And the MIA was trying to solve that problem by giving them access. The league met about this, and we discussed this for, for a couple of weeks, and then finally just decided that it was safer to not have large groups of kids potentially at the school at any given time. We have five hundred, of the approximately eight hundred kids in our school, we had five hundred kids do a sport last year, and that's not, that's individual children, that's not like just adding up everyone who participated. So we just didn't feel that it was safe for our, and we are the smallest school in the league by, by a good amount. So a lot of schools did run the, the chance that you would end up with six or seven hundred kids at the school practicing at the same time, and the league really reached a good consensus that it just wasn't a safe thing to do. We discussed it internally, externally, and that's where we landed with that. So there'll be no change to that rule for this year. Kids will practice and play in the season that they are, are playing their sport in. And the last one is spectators, this is like a, it's really important, this spectator discussion, which probably went as long as the coaching one with the league, we have to stick to the state guidelines. So there is, there are, there's no perfect solution. Whenever someone tells you, you have to limit your access to a number that's much lower than your capacity, there's, there's always the, "Well, what if?" or, "Why can't we do that, or why can't we do this?" The reality is, we have to limit ourselves under the current guidelines to fifty people or less at our outdoor games. There's nothing I can do about it, except follow that rule. So what we agreed to as a league is that we are discouraging, and I would discourage all our parents now, and this is hard to say, I am a parent of kids who play and played high school sports, I know, I know what your reaction is going to be. We are discouraging people from traveling to other towns to go to games. We agreed that we're not obligated to let people in from other towns. It's really a respect thing, the, it's their facility, it's our facility, we need you to respect our facility, and we'll respect your facility. So that's really where we landed on this. I'm still working out the details of how we're going to do it. I don't want there to be an arms race of people showing up at noon, that's not a safe thing to do, and, you know, people trying to get there to be part of the first fifty or whatever, it's, we're not, we're not going to do that. I have a more controlled thing that we're going to put out, and hopefully, it's the closest we can get to, to satisfying the players and their families. This is really about, it's really about the kids and the parents who've supported them their whole life, so that's really what I would like to focus on. We're going to have to contact trace at all the games, the kids are going to be running around in masks on the field. There are specific rules about sanitizing equipment at, at the end of each quarter for soccer, they're playing quarters now, so that the kids can have a mask break and clean the balls. I could go on for forever with the details, but we're prepared to do it. I'm trying to bolster my event staff, we're going to need to have more people just to make this stuff work, so we're, you know, we're, it's going to be a lot of work, but it's going to work out, I think. Something else that we really just came upon today, it's not, it's an idea right now, we're, as a league, likely, and I say this because not all schools are approved yet, there are some remote schools that, that need approval to do sports, a couple have already in the league. We're going to try to group our games against certain towns, you know, in the same week, so we're not running around and going to, who are as far as the way, Taunton, Canton, and Milford, we're not going to kind of spread it around, we're trying to centralize who we play and when, so that if anything does happen, we're able to actually, you know, have a good history of who we were with, and it's only, it doesn't affect the whole league, and we're trying to just do this in the safest way possible. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Sure.
Thanks, Joe, I really appreciate, I can't even imagine what you're having to deal with right now. One of the questions that I had, which kind of goes against what, I know in high school that has been kind of the norm, is that kids have to ride the bus if they're going to an off-site game. Is there, you know, going to be a change in that, where you have, you know, seniors driving themselves? I'm just thinking of, you know, we've been talking about bus capacity and all of that, and, you know, is that something that's being considered, or something that was talked about through the Hockmuck kind of large?
Yeah, that's an excellent question. So the other reason to set up the schedule the way we're envisioning it setting up is that it would limit the number of buses people need. Some people have access to two a day, some people have access to three, that people, schools. Some districts have two or three a day, and it's, you can't get seventy-five kids to, or seventy kids to an away game on two buses, but you can do it on three. We've discussed having a parent, I don't know where the process is with that, so I can't really answer the question, but we've discussed some type of a waiver where kids can get a ride, or drive themselves, or drive a teammate, and all the different combinations of things for that, so we have discussed that, it's a great question, that's, that's not something we've finalized that I'm aware of right now.
No, and part of that is kind of getting a legal sign-off from the parents.
I understand that.
Because the parents are the ones who are accepting the risk we aren't, if they're going to allow their child, A, to drive, or to take another child, and that other child's parents have to be willing to also sign off, you know, that happening. So we think at this point, based on the limited sports, we have the busing capacity. Obviously, football would have been a huge concern, because they would have taken all of our buses to move the football team. But with the sports that we're talking about now, you're talking about basically twenty-five kids in general, on any of those sports level, that's a bus. So even if we needed two buses because of coaching and stuff like that, that's not quite as bad. And I think we can handle that at this point. But again, we think we're probably going to have a looser guidelines on the student driving, but with a sign-off only.
Okay.
Tina?
So I have about six different questions over here that I thought of while you were talking. My first is, are you going to do a fall athletics night? I don't see how we can do a traditional one as in the past, but how are you going to handle that for our fall sports?
Another great question. So typically, those happen a couple of days into the preseason.
Yeah.
Which in a normal world would have happened already.
Yeah.
I'm actually, I have a coaches, a meeting with all of our fall coaches tomorrow night at five, that's basically going to be the test run for having an athletics night. But I do plan on having a virtual one for the kids who are going to be in this fall season, and we'll just do one, you know, as needed for, we're going to do them for every season, but now we'll just have four. So we'll just focus on the teams that are playing now, and then next would be the winter, and then the Fall Two. So yes, I don't have a date for that yet, it's a great question, but, you know, I'm planning on doing that.
And what about the ability to reschedule games with a town, if a town goes in, one of our member towns goes into the red?
So that's.
How's that going to work?
It's actually, we're in a pretty good spot. One thing the, I forgot to mention, one thing the MIA also did was that they canceled the postseason.
Okay.
Which actually helps, in my opinion, it helps schools finish their schedule, because it allows you to stop and come back, and you don't need to play eighteen games or twenty games. If you, if you play four, you play four, if you play four and then two in a month, like that's, to me, that's a good solution. I think it was a really good, good way to do it, it takes the pressure off of rescheduling.
And gives you flexibility, if there is a town that is, has an uptick where other towns, you know, may not have that uptick to keep our kids.
Yep, it may cost us a week of games, you know, but we're, we're just going to do whatever we have to do. There's no, we're not going to play any out-of-league games, so it's a very fixed set of towns that we'll be dealing with. And then we did leave some time in November to, you know, of course, we're going to reevaluate everything.
Right.
Constantly, so we left time in November to possibly play other games against other Hawk schools, whether it's teams we've already played, or, you know, maybe we play against the other side, it's still up in the air, but we're just, we're trying to work through it as fully, but as openly as we can, so.
I have two more questions, but I want to give anybody else a chance.
Go ahead, Tina, you're asking a lot of questions that I did, so, but go ahead.
So, all right, the locker rooms and the weight room.
Yes.
Is the weight room going to be open for student use? I see Mr. Yook is shaking his head vehemently.
We're not opening the buildings in general, so the locker rooms and the weight rooms are closed at this point.
Okay. I know the weight room's been used for offseason training, I know there's no offseason coaching, but that hasn't fallen under coaching in the past.
Correct.
So, but the weight room will not be available for students to use after school. Same with the gyms, they can't shoot hoops in the gyms, I just want people to have an understanding.
The biggest issue everybody has to understand is, is that if we don't lock down the buildings as soon as the kids are gone.
Yeah.
We will never get them clean.
Yeah.
And not in the level we're talking about. We used to be able to do it because we didn't have to go into such a level as far as, you know, disinfect it and stuff like that. So we've taken a tact at this point, and that's again, why volleyball's pushed out, out of this current fall season, is to basically say, for the safeguards of the teachers, the kids that are going to be there, and making sure we can get the process done, the building has to go down.
So how's that going to work with the locker rooms for our kids who need to change and get outside for their practices? Are we going to, I mean, I, obviously, we can't have too many kids in the space at once. How's that going to work?
I'm going to encourage kids to come to school.
Ready to go.
Ready to practice.
So come in your gym shorts and your t-shirt.
Sure, and there are obvious exceptions. We had talked also about where the kids are going to put their bags, you know, because the sport bags are bigger than their school bags.
And they have valuable equipment in them, we've already, we've talked about this.
Yes, so it's actually an odd blessing in disguise that with all of the furniture removed from the classroom, the kids can very easily put their big bag next to their desk. So they'll actually have it all day, they won't have to, you know, get to school at seven fifteen at the high school, put it in the locker room, and then get down to class, we're just going to have them keep it with them, and that way, we don't need to put it anywhere, they don't need to congregate to pick it up, they can just have it with them.
If you're a golfer who drives, you can leave your clubs in your car?
Correct, yep.
So, I'm sorry about these, but these are the kinds of questions that our athletes and their families are going to have.
Totally agree.
And the booster clubs, obviously, they're not going to be able to meet at the high school at night, so they're going to have to plan out where they're going to have their booster meetings going forward.
Yep.
But it won't be at the high school. Okay, thank you, those were my questions. I appreciate it.
So that kind of brings up something, you know, you can have a kid that is in band, and also is in a sport, so they're carrying to school their, potentially their musical instrument, their bag for the clothes that they have, they should already be dressed to go to practice, but then also dressed to be, you know, in November, outside, playing band outside during the day. That's a lot to carry around. I'm just trying to envision how that's going to work.
Yeah, I can't, unfortunately, I can't really speak to what the music program's going to do, I don't, I don't know how, what they're recommending or anything, so I don't, I don't know. But yeah, there are, sure, there are going to be definite, there's going to be challenges for everybody, and that's, that's, yes, an example of that. It's, took a long time for these things to come out, so I spent a lot of time making up scenarios in my head. I don't know if I'd come up with that one, but every time I thought I had them all, someone else comes up with a good one. So, no, it's a, it's a very valid point, and we'll, we'll, we'll work with the kids to figure out how we're going to make that happen for them.
Yeah.
It's really, I would focus on the kids that, just to kind of subset it, it's the kids that don't drive, so let's just say roughly freshmen and sophomores, and it's only half of them at a given time would be there on a given day, so now you're, you know, the list of, the population of kids that may be in that situation will be much smaller than it would be typically.
And I think what's typically happened as far as music, and Diana can correct me if I'm wrong, but they have put their equipment down in the, the music area, they don't carry it around all day, I've never seen that happen, so.
No.
So I think that's going to continue to be the, the routine at the middle school we've had, in our group space areas, we have racks, and a lot of the kids, that's where they put their band equipment while they're going on to their classes. So we don't assume that that would change in the process, we don't assume they're going to carry everything to every classroom. And again, we may find out when it comes to the, the sports bags and stuff like that, that there's a safe alternative, but we have to work kind of through that and see where it is at this time.
Yeah. And I can just see, especially for freshmen, just being presented with this information, they haven't been at the schools yet, they're still trying to figure all these things out, they're trying to figure out all of these different pieces that are connecting together, it's just, that's a lot of change, and trying to kind of really be able to give them some reassurance, because freshman kids are asking, as well as the parents, and so the parents aren't able to really give them any answers to those questions.
But I think that's typically handled by the staff as the kids come in.
I think the reassurance is, there is no, there is not, what you're doing is not going to be wrong, you have to be in the situation to figure it out. So, and everybody is approaching it in the same way. So you're not taking a wrong step, sorry, because I can't, it's going into my mouth, sorry about that.
You're muffled.
My kids say I look like a muppet when I talk with a mask on, so. There is no wrong step to take, that everybody's in the same situation, and it will be figured out when it needs to be figured out, and if it doesn't work, then we'll iterate on it and come up with a new solution. Not the most satisfying answer, but that's what we're all dealing with.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a reality for, for the schools too, it's for everything, if something, we can have a plan, and if it doesn't work, we just need to be ready to adjust that plan to make it work. It's not, you know, I'm not going to sit here and claim that we got this right, but it's, you know, we're just, we're going to follow all the safety guidelines and do that, and.
And I'll even give an example, I think Kami's done on the music side, has worked with her staff trying to figure out different things, but one of the ideas they had was to use the concession side of the concession stand to allow the kids to store their band equipment there.
Right.
Especially if they're going to be outside practicing, so they wouldn't have to carry it around. Where we don't have it as a quote-unquote cooking concession area.
Right now.
We thought that was good. We've also talked about potentially with our trainer, letting her use half of that back area, it's two sections, there's a back room and another room, so, which would give, she's got a tight quarters right now, would give her a much larger area to keep kids distanced in there. So we're looking at, at being as creative as we can, and I think I have to give credit to, like Kami and Joe, as far as trying to figure out different ways to handle those type of situations. And I think we have some plans, and we're just going to have to see how they actually work.
Right, and I think that that's what I'm trying to convey, is that the kids need Right, and I think that, that's what I'm trying to convey, is that the kids need to be able to, or feel comfortable enough to, to speak up, to, to say, here's a problem, you know, like, I've got my jacket because I'm outside, I've got this, I've got that, I can't carry all of it and be organized for teachers. So it's, it's one of those things of, that's hard for the younger, I, I'm sure that the juniors and seniors will be speaking up maybe sometimes a little too much, but for, for those younger grades, trying to make sure that they know who to speak up to if they see things, because the more information, then decisions can be made.
Yeah, I can't, I can't answer, I'm at great risk of filling my inbox. I can't answer every, I can't answer every question. But if anybody wants to email me, they can, I will get back to you, even if it's just an I don't know or thanks, I hadn't thought of that, just, it's okay. And my office, for the, for the freshman families that are watching, is in the main hallway by the main office, in the math hallway. The door is literally open from the time I walk in until the time I leave, unless I'm not in the office. So, the kids can come in anytime, and we can try to figure it all out for them.
That's where they can store their bags.
Exactly.
Thought of that. Gets a little crowded, though.
I do have one question. Looking outside of the fall sports, is there any talk of sports that will not happen this year at all?
No. So, I'm not going to mention any, but logically, some are much more challenged than others. But I have not heard of any that are just conceding that we're not doing it. The, the offer to modify the sport still stands for all the sports. It would then need to be approved by the Sports Medicine Committee at the MIA, I believe, just to make sure that the plan that someone comes up with is safe and appropriate, and if a sport can't modify what they're doing, they're just ultimately not going to get approved. And that would happen at the, at the state level. And then obviously, all, all the things I mentioned, especially about spectators or, those kinds of things, we're obviously governed at the local level by the district, by the Board of Health, so there's, there's a lot of layers to, just because, just because the MIA says it's fine, it doesn't mean that, you know, necessarily a district, any district or any Board of Health or any whatever would decide to just go ahead blindly and do it. But no, as of right now, there are none that are canceled, no. But some do meet pretty good challenges, though.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Tina?
Thank you.
Are you, are you finished? I didn't mean, I don't want to interrupt. I, I did have two other, not questions, just comments, but I, as we were talking, I, I have talked to so many parents of high school athletes who are thrilled that they will have a season this fall, but I hope that those parents will remember, you know, as far as the, the traveling to other districts and, you know, two parents or two family members at a game or whatever, that their cooperation is going, in cooperation with all these guidelines is going to be key to continuing this, this series. So, you know, we're all happy, but it's going to take everybody's cooperation working with you to make this happen. That's one thing I wanted to say. The other thing is, I have had people say, well, football, it's, we're going to have snow the entire month of March, but we have a turf field, and we can plow that turf field, no?
Can't plow it in February.
Can't plow it in February? Can't plow it in March?
One little warranty issue. The, the thing with plowing the turf field-
How does that work?
We were only able to do it on a once, like, at a time basis, and it was because the surface underneath was warm and was melting, so it was soft and could slide.
Yeah.
In February at zero degrees, it's going to take the mat and rip it right up.
Okay.
And it's a million dollar investment that I don't think anybody here has got the extra money to let me replace, so.
So it could be complicated.
And you could be out there literally plowing every day.
Yep.
There's no place to put the snow now that we have an eight lane track sitting there.
Mm-hmm. And we don't want to ruin that.
And we don't want to ruin that. So, you know, again, if it was in the spring, and we got late in the spring, and it was, and it was warm enough, and, and we could put it to the end zones, that would be something we would consider, but I really think we're going to have a hard time considering that we do it in February.
So we're going to have to pray for no snow for our football families.
It did not, it did not snow last winter, at all, so. I'm just offering some hope, I'm offering goodness, trying to look on the bright side.
I think you have to pray for snow, but that's only one piece of the puzzle. I think you got to pray for a vaccine and a whole bunch of other things.
All kinds of things we're praying for.
When you start talking football and wrestling, the game changes, so, I know that.
Hundred percent.
I'll set.
I'm all set, thank you.
So I, I just wanted to make, first of all, Joe, I wanted to thank you. I, I live this every day, as you well know. I think your encapsulation of everything and your identification of everything for the town of Foxborough was right on the money. So thank you for all the time that you put into this as well.
Thank you.
Not easy to digest everything that's out there. The challenge for the athletic director and certain, for anyone who wants to be exposed to sports in Massachusetts, is trying to compile all the major documents that are out there. One says this, one says that, recommends this, and it keeps going, kind of in a, kind of a spin, does it not? So I, I think your, your assessment was right on target, and your leadership and your, your wisdom is great, so thank you. I did want to make a comment about music, because I, Michelle, I think it was a great question, and the first thing that comes to mind when I exposure music is that there's going to be some young players there with very expensive instruments, so I would get that. But the one thing that I think Kami, and you mentioned Kami for me, one thing that Kami and her staff does do, besides building leadership capacity with the students to help other students, they also build leadership capacity throughout the years in, in the program. So I don't think there's going to be any, as much as carrying the stuff and what do I do with everything is one question, but how to maintain and take care of what I have to is not going to be our problem. I, I would think not, I would think not, because of our leadership, of our, of our staff. So, so I think that's a good thing, is that we have the staff out there that is probably going to put their heads to this whole plan, because that's not a simple solution when it comes to the magnitude of what these kids are dealing with. So, I, I think, I think you, I'm glad you mentioned Kami, because I think she's on her game as well, too. So I think that's very good.
Absolutely.
And I was just going, and Joe, again, you, you said what you said well. We talked about gym bags and all these things here today. The one thing I do know that's available to athletic directors and anyone in the world that would like to see it on the MIA website, all these sport modifications that you've mentioned, Joe, are all accessible on the MIA website, there's a COVID page there. I happened to author all those documents for the Sports Medicine Committee last week, and in those documents is a description of what you should have in your gym bag. Extra sanitizer, this, that, this, that, right? And, and there's also information in there about face masks. So the, the Sports Medicine Committee and all the ADs across the state that worked on these documents tried to put together helpful hints for us all to function effectively. And in those guidance is also what will happen with gym bags, that one bag's going to be six feet, and the next one's going to be six feet apart, and everyone's going to have spaces and places for everything to be done. So I just wanted to mention that that's all kind of there, it's all very helpful, and it was developed to be educational and informative, so I think it will help guide us as we go through this.
I agree.
Thank you. Anything else?
Not for Joe, but thank you very much, Joe.
Joe, thank you very, very much. Really well done, really well done, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Joe. I, Rich, I was just going to comment, I mean, we really didn't talk about the music program in and of itself, and I, I know that they are working really hard. They've been doing, you know, virtual meetings with the parents, and hopefully all the parents have gotten that and have attended it, but they're working really hard to do not only outdoor, but in, you know, all the indoor and virtual, and I have to commend them for working really hard to be innovative with everything that's going on.
I did miss something there, so I, and, you know, the fact you just said the outdoor. We did rent two tents, one for each, the Hearn and the high school, so that we have outside space for the bands, because their biggest, and chorus is their biggest thing, is the spacing is much greater than the six feet. So we did, we did do that. They will be installed just before school starts, and we've got them on a, a monthly rent, and can up that for a month, whether dependent, obviously, as to whether or not we wish to. The, so I think that is, is one of the things. Again, we're, we're working with all of these subcommittees that Amy put together earlier, whether it's the health one or the, the, you know, services like Joe and Kami and stuff like that. I, I think everybody really has stepped up and put a lot of effort in this summer. That is not typical for what their responsibilities are, if you will. I know Jen Rosenberg, on the health side, has just been incredible. I can't even imagine the amount of hours she's put in to make sure not only her staff, but us as a, you know, administrative team, understand the, the guidelines there. So, lot of, a lot of stuff happening here, but, you know, every time somebody says something, we realize something else we've done to try to deal with those issues. Yeah, thank you.
And, and that was one of the things that I thought was very true and brought a lot to home to me as a parent, but also on the school committee, is that several other districts are reducing what they're providing for music, for chorus and for band, through this, and so I, I commend and really appreciate as a parent of kids and music that, that that's not happening.
That's, thank you, thank you for saying that, too. We've mentioned that the vents are good because we fix them and do something every day and every year. The music is good here is because of the standard every day and every year, is it not?
Right.
Isn't, so that's, that's why, that's why we stand here together. So I thank you. I'm glad you mentioned that, too. Personally, to me, music's quite important.
Right, because parents are, sport parents are very happy, and the kids are very happy that it's happening, but the music kids are, are very much the same amount. It's very important to them.
Thank you. I just want to say one thing, whether it's music, sports, or whatever, our primary goal obviously is educating. And the biggest fear we have with all of these gatherings and all of these different groups that we're bringing together is that it's counter to what we're being told to do. And so that's where we hope the parents are really trying to instill, because we can't do it ourselves, into the kids that the social distancing as best as possible can be done, because if it's not, everything we've done to get the kids back in school is, is going to be for naught, and I really would hate to see that happen.
I think we all agree on that.
And I think that, that, a lot of that goes back to a bigger point that Tina was trying to make around just the sporting events, right? So, we as family members or parents or guests are setting the example for everybody else, so that doesn't change because we're going back to school. We still have to continue to be the example that we want our kids to see.
And that, just to echo all of that, but at the same time to add on, as starting off in a hybrid model by reducing our capacity by half, where everyone is six feet apart, and we have all of these safety protocols in place for movement in hallways, and arrival and dismissal, and multiple areas of where students are going to be coming in and leaving, we can control all of that within the school day to the best that we can by mitigating all of those factors, but it really is something that parents need to think about when students are outside of schools, because we want our students back in schools. We know that it is safe to do it with all of those safety barriers that are being put in place. We know as a state that the transmission is low, we know that Foxborough's numbers are low, and we've done a good job with that, but we, we can't let up on that. We've got to be even more diligent if we're going to be able to keep students in school.
Thank you, everyone. Thanks for all your thoughts, too. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the first reading of the new policy, EBCFA. So I think we should probably discuss reading that as well, too. And then also, we added to the school committee packets, policy BGD as well, and so I think maybe after the first reading, or at some point, we might need a motion to dispense with the standard policy adoption of BGD for emergency purposes. Our policy, BGD, does state that for emergency purposes, we could adopt another policy immediately. So I, I think we should maybe read the, the first reading first of the face covering policy, and then we can decide where we wish to go from there. Great, thank you. Brent, to Michelle, would you like to read?
Want to start out?
Sure. I will take this down briefly. All right. Policy, EBCFA, face masks. The Foxborough Public Schools committed to providing a safe environment as schools reopen during the COVID-19 pandemic. According to public health experts, one of the best ways to stop the spread of coronavirus and to keep members of our school community safe is the use of face masks. Therefore, in accordance with guidance from the Centers of Disease Control, CDC, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, DESE, and the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, DPH, the following requirements are in place until further notice. A face mask must be worn by all individuals in school buildings, on school grounds, during school-sponsored functions, and on school transportation even when social distancing is observed. Masks can be disposable or reusable, and will need to fully cover the nose and mouth and secure under the chin, fit snugly but comfortably against the side of the face, and be secured with ties or ear loops. Based upon guidance from health authorities, neck gaiters, open chin triangle bandanas, and face coverings containing valves, mesh materials, or holes of any kind will not be considered appropriate masks. Individuals may be excused, as further defined herein, from the requirement for the following list of reasons per CDC guidance. If the individual has trouble breathing, is unconscious, is incapacitated, or cannot remove the mask or face covering without assistance. In addition, masks or face coverings will not be required for anyone who has a medical, behavioral, or other challenge making it unsafe to wear a ma, a face mask or face covering. A written note from a treating physician is required for a requested exemption. Parents may not excuse their child from the face mask requirement by signing a waiver. Students shall wear masks at all times except the following situations when social distancing shall be enforced. During designated mask breaks, while eating or drinking, during portions of physical education classes when determined by their teacher, and while outside when directed by school district personnel. Exceptions to this policy under certain circumstances, such as for students with medical, behavioral, or other challenges who are unable to wear masks, must be approved by the building principal in consultation with the school nurse and local board of health. In such circumstances, alternative protective measures will be explored. A student's mask or face covering is provided by the student's family. Staff members are responsible for providing their own face coverings. However, the district will supply disposable face coverings for individuals who arrive at a building or board school transportation without one. A student's failure to comply with these expectations and who willfully defies redirection from school staff will be considered insubordinate. Such behavior will be addressed per their school handbook. Building administration will consult with the parents or guardians to determine whether an exception is appropriate. If not, the student may be removed from the school buildings in-person learning until such time as they can comply with the requirement or the requirement is lifted. Violations of this policy by staff shall be handled in the same manner as other violations of school committee policy. Visitors in violation of this policy will be denied entry to the school or district facility and/or grounds. This policy will remain in place until rescinded by the school committee. Legal references Commonwealth of Massachusetts COVID-19 Order Number 31. Do I have to read the website?
No, no.
Thank you.
I don't know how you read slash, double dot.
References Centers of Disease Control Prevention and Warning Masks, Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education reopening guidelines, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Mask Up Massachusetts, source MASC, August 2020.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your work on this so, so swiftly. I, I think we, Dr. Vodich can help, help guide me here, too, but I think we really got attentive to this because of the need for a face mask policy as we begin the school year. Would you not agree, everyone? So I think that's why we wanted to get it on this meeting right away as much as possible. I had mentioned to you already before you read this, that we do have policy BGB already in place, and there is a notation in the policy BGB of the Foxborough School Committee policy, that the Foxborough School Committee may dispense with the above sequence to meet emergency conditions. That sequence speaks to our standard policy sequence, which is reading in one meeting, and then reading a second time in a second meeting before adoption. So I don't know what the interest and the will of the committee is, but I would suggest that we would want to activate BGB emergency status.
I would agree with you there. I, just the way my mind works, I think it's the lawyer thing, Michelle, is I read that. The highlighted, you know, about dispensing with the above sequence to meet emergency conditions. And I was like, well, what do we say an emergency condition is? So I looked at another policy we have, which is notification of school committee meetings, which defines an emergency as a sudden, generally unexpected occurrence, or a set of circumstances demanding immediate action. And I think this is a set of circumstances demanding immediate action, so it would fall under our exception of emergency. I think it needs immediate action because the start of, well, we've already started school for teachers, but it's, I think it's imperative that we get this policy in place before our students, you know, enter the buildings, and we have open houses, and we have fifth grade orientation, and we have all kinds of things that are happening. So I would agree with you, Richard, that this does fall under that exception on filed BGB. And there were two little typos.
Yeah, I saw that as well, too.
With the inserting an "is" in the very.
Line one.
In line one.
Are we doing that now?
Yeah.
Yep.
I said with the, if we fix the typos, then I'd be happy to make a motion.
And actually, Michelle and I caught.
A couple more.
Yeah, three places. We just want a terminology shift to be, to make the policy consistent.
Go ahead.
So is, what was the other typo you found, Tina?
The other one I found was the second-to-last bullet from the bottom. It should say during portions of physical education class.
Yep.
There it is.
So, you know, one of the things that Brent and I talked about was the terminology of, is it face masks or face coverings? And one of the things that we had decided and thought we got rid of all of them was that because of the new CDC guidelines and all of the research that they've done about gaiters, you know, and as well as handkerchiefs, that that's not recommended. And really, what's recommended is a face mask. That we tell it like it is. It's a face mask. It's not just, hey, put something in front of your face and cover it. It's something that fits securely and that is covering all of the areas that we have in here. So that's where we tried to, throughout this, to talk about it as a face mask. So we found a couple of spots that, in reading it again, not looking at it for a couple of days, where we have face covering in there, is still in there. And so that's where I would recommend that we take those out. And.
That's the third, the.
Right. So where I found them was in the third paragraph, last bullet. It says cannot remove the mask without assistance. So taking out "or" the face covering. Then that next paragraph, in addition, masks or face coverings, remove it there. And at the end of the sentence, it also says "or" face covering. And then on the second page, a student's mask or face covering, remove it there. And at the end of the second sentence there, it should say staff members are responsible for their own face masks. And then however, the district will supply disposable face masks for individuals. So I think that that should cover all of it.
Any others?
Anybody else see any others?
I think you've got them.
And the only other thing that I, that I would add is that our Health Wellness Safety Committee, where we meet weekly with the Board of Health and with Deputy Chief Tom Kinvan, they've also, and with Jen Rosenberg as well, have gone through this, made suggestions as well that both Brent and Michelle had when they were meeting within their subcommittee, too.
I think it looks good and keeping it's simple and clear with face masks versus, since that's, we're not allowing the other things in the schools is the way to go. So I, those are all good catches, and I would, I didn't see any other face covering in there. It's all, all should be masks, yeah.
Within this, is there a major definition of a face mask?
Yes, it's up top, covering nose.
Second paragraph.
So mask can be disposable or usable, will need to fully cover the nose and the mouth and secure under the chin.
Right.
Right.
Got it. Yeah, that's right. So that's why. And I think that's important because, yeah.
We thought so, too, and that's why we tried to put it in the beginning, as well as that last sentence of saying, these don't qualify.
Yes.
And unfortunately, we're in a situation, and we're all going to get sick of hearing it, that things are changing at the drop of a dime. So yes, you know, I know Dr. Burdo had said in the beginning, you know, gaiters, yes, they are acceptable, but we now know that they're not. And it's, it's really, that's just something that this may have to change at some point in time later as we know more. And we tried to incorporate as much as we could in looking at others, you know, what other school districts and so forth were doing as well.
I think that pretty much sums up our daily life these days. Is that each day, we are communicating new information as it becomes available, and sometimes it contradicts previous information, and that's just the way it is right now, unfortunately. And it's very frustrating for everybody, people at home, it's frustrating for us. But it's most important that we're communicating the most current information that we have, and that's what we continue to try to do.
Yeah, and I think you're right. It could change fluidly. We had, we had recent advice that talked about multiple layers was key, so that you could have masks or face coverings that are very thin in nature. And then it was recommended to us by a doctor advisor from the Governor's Commission that multiple layers was critical as well. So that's why there's so much fluidity here. Because we learn one thing, and then we kind of move in a week and a half or two weeks to this other new thing. So it's complex. But I think this is good.
I think it sounds great.
So I actually would prefer if we, if we had a motion to dispense with the BGB sequence, I would, I would prefer if we did make a motion to dispense with policy BGB, with the above, the BGB sequence or policy adoption on, based on emergency conditions.
I will make a motion that we dispense with file number BGB, School Committee Policy Adoption Procedure, to meet emergency conditions in adopting the face mask policy.
Seconded.
Seconded, so by Tina and then seconded by Michelle. Any more discussion on this motion to dispense with the policy BGB? All in favor of that? Please raise your hand. Great. And then maybe a motion?
I would love to make a motion to adopt file EBCFA face mask.
Second.
As.
As amended here during the meeting.
As amended during the meeting, sorry.
Thank you. And a second by Brent, Tina, and then Brent. Any more discussions on the face mask? F-E-B-C-F-A, E-B-C-F-A.
No more discussion, but I would like to thank our policy subcommittee. They did a wonderful job.
Thank you.
In a short period of time, so thank you.
Go. Well done. Well done.
Thank you.
No more further discussion. All in favor?
We did, okay, no, go ahead.
All in favor of EBCFA? Five zero. Thank you very much.
Just a note for the minutes, Janet, that was Rob, but seconded not Brent.
Did I say, did I look at you and say Brent?
You did, twice.
I had the mask on. I couldn't see.
That's okay.
I think Janet would have figured that one out. Excuse me, Mr. Chair, may I make a suggestion? I think this policy should go up in its entirety on our COVID page as opposed to, I mean, it also should go in our policy manual. But our policy manual is a little bit cumbersome for people to find things. This is one, since it's newly adopted, and it's extremely important to our start of school. I think the whole thing, now that it's adopted, should just go right up there, maybe up in that right-hand corner where you were putting the FAQs, if I might make another suggestion, because that's really helpful.
I will add it there. Is there a way for it to be emailed out to parents?
Yeah, I mean, that, that's probably a good way to, if the principals referenced it or, you know.
They could include that.
They could include it when they send home the protocols.
Yeah, I agree, I agree, and we can make a suggestion that the principals can consider using it and for their benefit.
Because I, I think that this type of policy, not only should parents read it, kids who are old enough should read it, know and understand it, and parents should have a discussion with the kids as to what, what it really means. You know, what does insubordination mean? What are situations where you can take the mask off and you can't? Because that's something that, the more that we can prepare our kids for what that's going to be like, where they can speak up or should speak up, and when they shouldn't, that really should be coming from the parents and not just the school. And because that hopefully will help reduce some anxiety that I'm sure most kids are feeling about, you know, these situations.
I would add, too, tomorrow evening is the elementary parent meeting that they're having. They could mention it there, and then with the secondary one being next Tuesday, they could also mention, include it in their agenda.
That's good.
And reference the COVID page also to find it.
There aren't any surprises here, but it does lay it all out in case you had any questions, in case you still, you know, were wondering if you could wear a gaiter or a mask with a filter. It's all right here, so I think it's a good reference point now that we have voted for it.
Thank you. Thank you all. Moving on to the next agenda item, we have listed there discussion about our school committee meetings for the coming year. I think you all saw the memo, the memo in your package that spoke about the availability of this meeting room for our meetings, which is suffice to work for us very well up to this point, and I think it does help us. So it was, it was indicated that the Mondays were full and maybe suggesting Tuesday meetings, and I think we all had a calendar attached there for the Tuesdays. Any further discussion or questions from the committee on the meeting dates?
You're looking at me. Do I have a lot of questions?
The masks are great for a queue, right?
It is a good.
The masks are great queuing. It's a queuing mechanism, right?
You know, you're a smart man, Mr. Chair. I do have a question. I guess, I have no problem. I mean, this is a great meeting space, and I think it's been, I know the technology here is, is much better for our friends and partners at Foxborough Cable Access. But I do think people wonder, you know, about us going back to the high school at some point. And I would want to make it clear that we're still limiting access to the high school in the evening, and that would include having our public meetings there on Monday nights, so.
The only other room in town that's available is the McGinty Room, right?
There's no television setup at the McGinty Room for this. That's my understanding. I mean, I think there have been meetings that have been televised, but we've had to have, you know, a camera, an actual cameraman come to do that. So this is a much better setup if we can secure it, if there's no conflicts with our. Sometimes the Board of Selectmen likes to meet weekly. As long as we can secure the room, we can't get bumped, because it is important for us to maintain a regular schedule, and people need to know really when. I mean, we, we have been kind of all over the place during this time of COVID, and I think having some consistency with our scheduling going forward would be a good thing. I don't mind the Tuesday nights. I, you know, if we can get this room, I'd be, I'm, I'm fine with that. But I do think having some consistency and predictability, at least for September and October and November, is going to be important. And I think while we're having this discussion, I don't know if we want to open our meetings up for people to come to them, or if we're going to continue with the Governor's Executive Order, as far as I know, about remote participation during this time is still in effect. I haven't seen any changes on that on the MASCE website, but since we're having the discussion anyway, I, you know, figured we could talk about that, too.
So, yeah, what are your thoughts, everyone, on Tuesdays and the other topic as well?
Tuesdays are fine with me. I think that that makes sense. I think at some point, we want to have people coming and attending the meetings. And if that's going to happen, then most likely, having it not at the school is probably better so that we're not bringing more public into the school at night.
Right.
Just for the various reasons that we've talked about. So just trying to kind of figure out consistency. I understand what you're saying, Tina, and kind of saying like, we want to be, we're part of the school committee. We want to be part of the school. We want to be there. But there's also kind of trying to figure out easy access for the public and making sure that the school's clean and doing that. So that was just kind of my thoughts on that piece.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's just important that people know that we're not afraid to meet at the high school, but we would like to keep the building as pristine as possible for our students and not, you know, be holding evening meetings.
And at the same time, we're not having like all of our students, you know, clubs and activities after school. They're taking place virtually, going back to the same reason of being able to get the buildings clean to the level of what we have to do now. So not having us in the building, it goes along the same with any activity.
I would agree. I also personally like the space and would like us to keep an open mind to bringing back to the meeting when possible, information from the school district and the people doing the programs in the school district as well. So this space does allow us, if we wanted to have guests of our school district and teachers bring something, a project or something to us. This space allows for that. So I'm not afraid of having space for the public or all of them, too. But one of the things I think we should be very proud of what we've done over the past years is bringing the school alive in our school committee meetings. And this space will allow for that. So we could very comfortably in this space bring three or four people to present a topic safely for them and for us at the same time.
Right.
Whereas if we get too much of a confined space, we're going to literally restrict, you know, everything we do.
I think, so we have to be careful because we can't, I don't think we can flip-flop on, sorry, we can flip-flop on that. I agree with you. I want us to find ways to bring back the program highlights, because I do think that that is very important, and it's very educational for all of us to see. I think with technology, I'm sure that that's starting to be explored. I don't think we're going to be able to flip-flop back and forth. Oh, this meeting, we actually have guests from a program coming in, so we're not allowing public. But next week's meeting, we don't have anybody scheduled, or the next meeting, I think we are there to say, yes, we're going to allow a certain number of the public to come in if they want, or we're going to reserve that space for program highlights. But we can't, I don't think we can flip-flop back and forth.
I would agree with that, too.
Do we know what our Board of Selectmen are doing? I watched their meeting last night, and they did have, they did have a number of visitors who were presenting at the meeting, and they did have someone who came for open, their citizen input. So if their meetings are fully open, then if there's no, then perhaps there's no reason for us to also not be remote, have remote participation, but be open. But we would have to have a threshold if, you know, if we had a lot of people show up.
We investigate the Governor's Order as well, too, so we clearly understand that? Obviously, our Selectmen and the Governor's Order, both?
Yeah, I think maybe this, that, I think for tonight, if we, I'm saying, I'm sorry, I kind of spiraled us off into a second, but related, a corollary topic. I think if we just settle on the calendar for tonight, perhaps we could do a little research into the Governor's Order and also what are, what are, you know, perhaps ask the Chair or the Board of Selectmen, how they're handling public participation at this point. I know they had, they had scaled it back as we had during the surge and going forward, but it, that, just having watched last night's meeting, it seemed like there were more people than I had been seeing at their meetings, so. Maybe it would be good to be consistent with, with the Board of Selectmen, I think.
Do some work or research into that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would expect that there's a room, you know, limit as to how many can be.
Well, I think this room holds 75 people, so.
Under, under the current orders.
It does it now.
We have to keep it under 25, so, you know, indoor gatherings, right?
Well, there's the 25 for indoor gatherings, and then there's the size of the room.
Right, because of the six feet, right?
Exactly.
Right, so there, I'm sure Town Hall knows that, and they probably should post it. But once we know that, that helps to know, okay, we have this many here just for the meetings themselves and who we have, then we would know how many more potentially that we could have in here. Because I don't know, just from kind of looking at it, how many we can have in here.
I think we, what we had at the last meeting was probably about close to the capacity, because we had all the extra guests. The only other thing I would ask, as we discuss this further, I think we do need to consider for the time being, while we are limited, that we do also leave that inbox open for people that want to send things in and get them on the record, so.
As an option.
Right.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Now I'm twisted.
So shall we, shall we bring this up for, we'll do some research and do some homework here, and we'll bring this up again in our next meeting?
For the public participation piece, but perhaps we could settle on our calendar.
I think we should definitely do that. Where is everyone on the Tuesdays?
I was about to move that we accept the edited calendar as presented. That's where I am.
Wow, second.
Second over here. I think the only discussion point I have is the next date on this calendar here in pink is the eighth.
Yes.
Which is next Tuesday. Or do we, or do we come back on the 22nd? And I was gonna, I was gonna ask the question from a school district perspective, do we need to do anything on the eighth?
Well, one of the, wasn't it just announced that the high school is doing their orientation on the eighth, so.
Does not seem like a good place for that, for that meeting.
Right.
And I'm not sure we have, I mean, we're talking five days from now either, or six, whatever that number is, bad math, six.
Well, and our next scheduled meeting isn't actually until the 21st, so we would, we'd be consistent with that. I guess my only other question is, is this agreeable with our friends at Foxborough Cable Access as well? Can they do every Tuesday? You know, assuming we're here on alternate Tuesdays from, from the Board of Selectmen.
So maybe, should we seek out Mike Weber and ask Mike Weber if Tuesdays are available?
Sorry, Mike, we're putting you on the spot.
Yeah, Tuesdays are good. One thing I just wanted to mention, I'll stand next to a microphone.
No, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Mike, for coming forward. Appreciate it.
I'm here for a lot of other meetings for other boards and committees. One thing that some of the groups that are going. One thing that some of the groups that are doing, say a planning board or a conservation commission, where they have a lot of people that need to come before the board, they actually set up some chairs in the hallway.
Oh.
There's another TV out in the hallway, and so they can kind of follow the meeting from outside, and then when their appointment comes up, they can come into the room.
Oh, that's good information.
That's one of the ways that they're kind of managing.
Very helpful.
People within the room. And then obviously, this room still has capability of a remote participant, so there's an expert that used to speak, and it's maybe just keeps one less person from coming and it's convenient. You know, that's always another option as well. But in terms of, you know, the Tuesdays, that's fine for us.
Thanks, Mike.
That was huge. Thank you so much. Much appreciated. Any further discussion about the calendars put forth?
So I will amend my motion to say I move that we accept the calendar as presented, save taking off the September 8th meeting.
Thank you.
Second.
Second on the, second on the amendment. Brent first and Rob, Rob, Brent, Rob.
Second. Sorry, Rob.
Oh, my gosh.
No, 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 it's a fluid thing, isn't it?
It is. Do we need, do we, I don't even know how to ask this question anymore. Do we anticipate needing to meet before the 22nd, based on kind of what we know right now? Which could change at any moment.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I was going to say absolutely, but more, but the more the, what I was, the concern that I had was more about public information and they're already having all these open houses and orientations, at least for my taste. If there's nothing of substance we need to, you need action on from us. I'm heartened that you're doing so much outreach to the community and putting out those opportunities for questions, because they're going to get into the details and that's what they want. And that's not what we're for. And so I'm, in light of that, I'm very comfortable.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor of the school committee's schedule as submitted today? Five zero. Thank you all. Thank you all. Next on the agenda is acceptance of donations.
I'll take it. Sorry.
So actually, we partially accepted this a while ago. Mrs. Joan Galvin, at the time, really wanted us to kind of keep it private, but she has decided that it's okay that her name be given. So she generously, as you know, came up with an offer back last year to redo all the landscaping in front of the high school to make it look much more presentable. Her donation was of stock, and when we sold the stock, we actually ended up getting $10,167 to spend. We spent just over $9,000 of her money and it left us with about $967. I've had conversations with her and she is in agreement with us using that money to work on where the bricks will be going with the other money that we've been collecting from the bricks and some other things to complete that landscaped area, which is the last piece of around the concession. So in effect, we're going to be spending a portion of that money on a second project, if you will. And again, I appreciate and thank Mrs. Galvin for her support and the look that we ended up with at the school was very nice, I think.
It really is. It makes the front of the high school look so much better. It was really well done. And I know Joan had a lot of personal input into the design of it and she did a great job. I mean, it does, it looks really, really nice. So that being said, I would love to make a motion to accept this donation with much gratitude to Mrs. Galvin.
Second. Second by Brent. Tina motioned. Thank you. Further discussion? All in favor? And with much, much gratitude for a great welcome addition to the high school facility. Well, thank you all. We've reached the last agenda item on our, on our agenda. We will be entering into executive session for the purpose of discussing strategy related to collective bargaining with the Foxborough Teachers Association. Specifically, we will be discussing a proposed memorandum of agreement which deals with the impacts of COVID-19 and hybrid learning on terms and conditions of employment. Further, I declare that holding the discussion in open session may have a detrimental effect on the school committee's bargaining position or the collective bargaining process itself. We will reconvene in open session and take a formal vote on the memorandum of agreement. I will now take a roll call vote on whether to enter into executive session.
Richard, I'm sorry, before you do that, can we do other matters? I just had one other matter.
Yes, we can do other matters first.
Should it be, I'm sorry, should it be first or should it be after?
No, no, I can, I will hold off on that for a minute.
I'm sorry. There was just, I just wanted to share with everyone at home, our new Director of Student Services, Mr. Corey Michaelazek, last week had a family forum, very similar to our virtual town halls that we've had. And it was a district-wide forum. Next week, there will be individual forums by grade level for question and answer sessions that will be hosted by Mr. Michaelazek, along with the team chairs and the director of our pre-K program. So I just wanted to share the dates and times with people so that they have that information so they could get it on their calendar. So on the ninth, which I believe is Wednesday, we will have a forum for the middle school parents from 6:00 to 6:30. And for the high school parents on that same evening from 7:00 until 7:30. And then the following evening, the Thursday, the 10th, we will have a forum for pre-K families from 5:30 to 6:00, and elementary families at that same evening from 6:30 to 7:00. And I just wanted to share that our special education team, our teachers, our team chairs and our director are working incredibly hard to enact a very complex schedule of services for our students. And they look forward to the opportunity. It was very well received last week when they had their other forum, and they really look forward to having more targeted time with families on those evenings. So I just wanted to share that. Sorry about that, Richard.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Any other matters? Sorry. Would you like me to read that introduction again or not? Everyone okay with what I stated about the executive session? I think I finished it. We will convene in open session and take a formal vote on the memorandum agreement. Like to take a roll call vote to enter into executive session. Rob?
Yes.
Tina?
Aye.
Brent?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
And Richard, aye. Thank you. We will now move into executive session.
We're not returning to open session.
We are.
Stayed up for the, for the entire meeting. We have, our school committee just voted out of executive session. We are now back into open session. Any motions by anyone as we've come out of executive session? Brent?
I move to accept the agreement from the FEA and Foxborough Public Schools Administration with the proposed edits and empowering, designating rather, the Chair to sign the final agreement once settled.
Motion by Brent?
I'll second that motion. I just would clarify that the agreement is entered into between the Foxborough School Committee and the Foxborough Education.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you for the.
Thank you, we just little, re-clarify the word, seconded by Tina. Moved by Brent, seconded by Tina. Any further discussion on that motion? All in favor of that motion, please, raise your hand. Five zero. Thank you. Any second motions? Brent?
I now move that to accept the proposed memorandum of agreement between the Foxborough Education Association Educational Assistance and the Foxborough School Committee with proposed edits and empowering the Chair to sign the final agreement once settled.
Second on that motion?
I'll second.
Tina, seconded again. Any further discussions on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you all, five zero. Thank you very much. I have no further items, no other items from anyone else? Motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chair, before.
I motion that we adjourn.
Before we adjourn, I just, I'm sorry, Michelle, I didn't mean to, before we adjourn, I think I would like to just compliment both our Foxborough Education Association and our, our school administration for their really hard work on the memorandum of agreement that we just accepted. Our teachers always put our students first, and we are so lucky here in Foxborough to have a union that, that, that supports education 10,000 percent. And I just wanted to say that, it's from my heart.
Well said. Thank you very much. And these are unique times, so we have to enter into these discussions and go down these roads. So thank you very much. Any other? Motion to adjourn?
I motion that we adjourn on our September 2nd meeting.
Thank you. Second? Was it Brent?
It was Brent.[1783.44]